It's 5:15, I'd like to call this regular meeting to order. I recognize everybody in the audience tonight. And would you please stand and recite the pledge with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, in the digital with liberty and justice for all.
Moving into school board norms, Aaron.
The board developed norms are to share and respect varied opinions and speak with united voice once a decision has been reached, to prudently prioritize resources in a student-centric manner that aligns with the district's strategic plan, to exhibit a mindset of continuous improvement through adequate preparation for meetings and a commitment to board education, and to commit to assessing board effectiveness to ensure high-quality governance for the staff, students, and community of Jamestown.
Thank you, Aaron. Moving to public communications, we have none. Any conflicts of interest to declare? Bob?
There's a student open enrolling to Pinger Buchanan, and I would have a conflict of interest with that.
Okay. We'll just have you not vote when that comes in. Moving to consent agenda, motion to approve. Motion by Aaron, seconded by Gail. Any discussion? Hearing none, assuming we will call a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Moving into our regular agenda, we have nothing under recognition or correspondence. Moving into reports, student council report? Lauren?
Hi. Hello. My name is Lauren Hibble. I'm the student council president. Next week, we are looking forward to Snow Week. We will be having a rally and coronation on Tuesday, and we'll have a talent show Thursday night. In the month of March, we are looking forward to another blood drive and possibly a food drive. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Heidi?
How many people do you have signed up for the talent show?
We are still working on getting people signed up. We hope to have like eight to 10 acts.
Jason?
Will the blood drive be open to the community? And if so, who do they contact?
It will just be for the high school because we want to encourage people, students to donate and see the benefits of donating.
Any other questions? None?
Alrighty. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, thanks for the report. Moving on to reports, if the board is alright, I mean if we have Officer Jeffrey come up so she doesn't have to sit around and listen to the rest of the reports.
You gonna stay there? Probably not. I'm Officer Jeffrey, the new SRO for the Jamestown Public Schools. I am from Williston. I went to college in Williston for a year, and I did 200 hours with the North Dakota Highway Patrol. After that, I continued my schooling in Minot. I graduated with a Bachelor of Science, minor investigations in policing, concentrations in addiction studies. And then I went on to the academy. While I was in college, I worked for the after-school program in Minot. After college, I went to the academy, and then I got offered a job with Jamestown Police Department. I'm going on my third year here. I guess it's a new position, so I'm kind of learning on the way, kind of making it fit more me than the past SROs. Start, I think I start my first class on Wednesday, so that should be interesting. See how the kids react to having an SRO again. I think they're pretty excited. Anyone have any questions?
Any questions for, Bob?
What made you want to go into this line of police work?
This line of police work? I guess I want to be able to help the kids before they become adults, give them someone to look up to, you know, be there to help them through the hard times because not every child has happy-go-lucky home life, so. Yeah, thank you.
Are you also going to use that text thing, I mean text tips to you or something?
Yes, yes. As far as I'm aware, that is still set up.
Okay.
No one's ever told me anything different.
Okay.
So yes, as far as I'm aware, that is still a thing, and there's still a banner above my door.
Okay. Heidi?
I just want to say welcome to the SRO part of your job, and thank you for taking this on. And just want to send appreciation to the city of Jamestown and the Jamestown Police Department for this partnership so that we can have this availability of having SRO in our schools.
Yes, thank you.
Rob?
Just a comment too. Mr. Gaylor and I were both a part of the interview process when Officer Jeffrey was in, very impressed with her, the foundations of relationships with our students. And I'll tell you what, in a year and a half of not having a school resource officer, it's one of those things, you don't know what you got till it's gone. We were always very appreciative of having the partnership and having a school resource officer available. But you really see the difference in our student body across our various schools, all the way from elementary all the way up to the high school, the impact that an SRO has in our buildings. And we're so thankful that we have that position back again. And now that the force is up to a capacity again and can provide that to us. We feel very fortunate, and we know how badly we have needed the SRO position, so very appreciative of it and of you, Officer Jeffrey.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I mean, thanks for coming.
Yes, thank you guys. Thank you for having me.
Moving on to food service report, Joel. Yep, go ahead, Rob.
So just to introduce Mr. Oster. We haven't had an opportunity to have Mr. Oster here. So he started in our food service department beginning of the year, our fiscal year in July 1, replacing Shelley Mack, who you all know very well. And we thought it was a good time to also bring Mr. Oster in. So you can meet him, and he can talk a little bit about food service, of course. Now, food service being a little bit different in the midst of a pandemic, we thought it would be a good opportunity to share information with the board as well as introduce Mr. Oster.
Hello, it's nice to meet you. As Mr. Lex said, I was hired in July, and native North Dakotan, from Washburn, North Dakota originally, and have a culinary background. Did a lot of cooking out in Madora. I also was a teacher, and I inspected school lunches for about five years. So that's kind of my background, how I got here. I'm not a dietitian, and I just love food, and I love culinary arts. And presently, I live in Steel, North Dakota with my wife and two kids. My daughter will be a senior next year, and my son's a freshman. So it's a nice little drive in the morning for reflection time back and forth each way, so I got plenty of time to do that. Just going back to the beginning of the year, you know, it's been basically kind of the stress of safety, right? It was always, what are we going to do? How are we going to feed these kids? And I think our staff has done a wonderful job at keeping them as safe as possible when they come in the lunchroom. The big concern's obviously, you know, sanitizing, making sure they sanitize their hands. You know, the salad bars had to go away, so we cup up all the vegetables and fruits. Many of you maybe have been in our lunchrooms, and they look a little different than they did before. But I think we're still getting the job done, and we're getting the nutrition to the kids and what they need. And I'd just like to say that everybody's done a wonderful job, from the principals on down, in teaming up to whatever it might be. Wipe off a table, or help a kid through the line, or making sure that their masks are up when they come to the line. So I think we do a pretty good job of staying safe. Another big part of this year is our saving grace is the free meals to all kids. All kids are able to eat free meals for breakfast and for lunch. So that has really boosted our participation, for breakfast especially. I just looked at stats compared to last year. We had over, about 2,000 extra breakfast meals were served for the month of January. I mean, that's huge. It would be nice if we could keep it that way. You know, that's always kind of a struggle to get the kids to come here to eat. But that's really been, you know, a help to put us in a good financial spot going into next year, I think. So, you know, they're talking in legislature of doing this free meal all the time. I mean, that's a big ask. I kind of don't think that's going to happen, but, you know, who knows? So hopefully, we can stay this five days, you know, complete five days through the school year, feeding kids two meals a day. That would be huge. And I just want to say, I look forward to, you know, when we can get past this and looking for more creative menus. I love chicken nuggets. They have a place in our cafeterias, but I like to do something more with a chicken nugget, you know, or pizza, or, you know, I look to expand that. So that's kind of my vision for the program, and that's about all I have. If you have any questions or concerns?
Jason?
Just for clarification, that free meals is this entire school year, correct?
Right, it's through the school year.
Yeah, the only caveat to that, Jason, is if the federal funds run out, which we don't believe that they will, but if they were to, then that program would end unless it was reauthorized or...
Right.
I mean, that's the only caveat. Very, very likely all the way through the end of the year.
Any other discussions or questions for Joel? None? Okay, thanks, Joel.
Thank you.
Moving on to number three, superintendent's report, Rob.
Thank you. So you have my written report. Touch on a few things. I'm sure as you looked at our numbers, not a surprise that the Instructional Plan Review Team is recommended to continue on our same path, which is Instructional Plan 1. Obviously, very pleased with the trends that we're seeing, which are continuing to decrease. We always want to be vigilant. We aren't through this yet, but we're happy that the downward trend is happening. One thing that I wanted to address that I think is really important that we continue to educate people on, we've had some questions about masking and what happens when a mask mandate ends. You know, what would happen if the mask mandate in Jamestown ended? What would the school district do? As a team, we have talked, and I feel pretty passionately too, that that's been a pretty important factor in why we've been able to have success. But beyond that, I selected a date, 12/18, and I provided that in your report. I think this is a good example of why we need to continue to have a mask mandate in the buildings. Regardless of how anybody feels about the effectiveness of masks, what we do know for sure, for certain, is that close contact and the need to quarantine was changed in October. And wearing a mask and wearing it properly is a factor for providing an exempt status. And I think this December 18 date that I provided you is a pretty good example of how important that could be. So if you look at the 18th, that's four positive students in the district on that snapshot of time. That's really pretty good. That's pretty low. That's, we're happy about low numbers. But I want to draw your attention to close contact exempt. So what that means is there's 87 students that were exposed during that day to a positive case, but they can still come to school. And they were exposed, but both the individual and the person, the close contact, they were both masked and masked properly. If that was, if those were not masked situations, those 87 students would be home in a quarantine. So now we're looking at four students that are out positive, 13 that are out, so 17 total are out of school. If we didn't have a mask mandate, that would be 104 students out instead of the positive plus the close contacts. So a significantly more number of students, a higher number of students would be impacted in a quarantine. So again, what we're doing is working. We are continuing to see a decline in impact. And I can't stress enough how important that close contact exempt status is to making sure that students are in school or having the opportunity to be in school.
Question? Go ahead, Heidi.
As long as you're talking about the masking, I did field a few questions when the governor's mandate expired on the 18th about masking at events in the buildings, athletic, you know, music events, those kinds of things. So if you would just address that as well.
So we continue to have the same expectations for our buildings, whether they're guests or students. The expectation is that, you know, we're asking people, whether they are home or visitors, to follow the expectations in our building. And I know that that can be, I think we're all at the place where we would love to not have, you know, I haven't talked to anybody that said, "I'd love to keep wearing this." It's all, everybody would like it to be done. But the expectation in the school building is that we continue to follow those same rules, and if we all take that little extra precaution and that little change, then we all benefit in the long run. So same expectation. And I'll just continue on if that's okay. If you, I've included our latest impacts as far as Friday, January 29. You can see, again, continuing to decline. I did my check this morning, and those numbers were the same. A few changes here and there in different buildings, but the total impact was the same still, the 12 out of school and no staff. So I'll just pause if there's questions, any more questions related to...
Gail? Nope. Your mic? Yep.
No, it did. Is there any evidence that masking has helped with other things? What are other illness rates like flu and other things that we would normally have at this time? How has masking impacted some of that? Just curious.
So it's a great question. We don't collect any data related to that. I mean, we could look at, we could do some comparisons in terms of our absentee and our attendance rates, but I think we would be kind of guessing as far as what the impact is. But I can say from health professionals that I've visited with that have seen a pretty significant decrease in the flu activities, what they've seen. You know, again, that's anecdotal. I don't know what kind of actual studies have been done with that. But I think that you can say with a level of general certainty that there's going to be some positive impact to any communicable disease. Did that answer your question? At least the best I could. Other questions there? Can I continue?
Go ahead.
Okay. So I'll be sharing, I won't talk a ton about the construction updates, the shared projects, because we'll be doing a presentation a little bit later to show you how those conversations have, where they started, how they've evolved. And I can say with a high level of certainty that what I anticipated doing in August is not what I'll recommend how we move forward, but as we've gotten to know, really dig in deeper to our needs and our priorities and that domino effect, I can tell you that the recommendation we're making would impact the highest number of students and programs. And we think that there's, we think it's a very good solution. But I'll get to that as we go through a little bit later in your meeting. A sort of similar area that actually came up from a conversation I had with Aaron related to the capital projects plan, that's been a big driver for me as a superintendent in what our needs are from a facility standpoint. But while I've been immersed in it, and the board's had reports on it, I think it might be time for us to explore Capital Projects Plan 2.0. Going through, and not just because the board makeup has changed, because the board makeup changes every two years, or potentially changes every two years. It's greater than that. I think as our needs have changed, as we've really started to check some boxes, there's some pretty big boxes, I think in particular to our elementary HVAC, those changes, those are pretty big boxes that have moved off the table. But beyond that, we refinanced debt. We know that we're supporting a shared facility with the University of Jamestown. There's an additional almost $2 million in facility projects. And now we know that we have potentially, we haven't heard any more information on cares, but that there could be some facility impact to the next round of ESSR dollars. With all of that information, it's wise to consider revisiting the capital projects plan, reprioritizing, because we're going to have some revenue we probably didn't anticipate having five years ago, number one, but also it's just the evolution of how our needs have changed and how we've spent those dollars. I know from working through that capital projects plan, which items, well, yes, it says $50,000 here, but we could do it for this, and we did it a little bit cheaper. But as, over time, it just makes sense for us to revisit this plan again, and I think it's time to bring consolidated construction back in and start to talk about 2021 moving forward, because I think it's time to do that. Related to, or the questions on that, I can pause.
Bob?
Maybe you're going to address this when we get into it later in the agenda, but it's been really an ideal construction season for the contractors. Is there going to be any kind of significant savings to the project because they are probably well ahead of schedule?
I can get some information from, I don't have, I haven't heard anything related to that. Of course, they are very far ahead. Who could have anticipated being in the position we're in, which is a great problem to have? I'll reach out to Dustin at University of Jamestown and see what he's hearing. I'm guessing probably not, but you never know. We've talked before about serial testing, so now we've had two events in serial testing. Not a ton of interest, to be honest. We're very appreciative of the National Guard for coming last Monday and training our individuals. We had, so when we put out the serial testing, we asked if people were interested, being regular testing, the serial testing, every once in a while as they felt they could need to, and then if they'd be willing to volunteer. And we actually had a number of staff. Amy heads up that process, so we appreciate her very much in taking leadership of that. But we also had four teachers and a support staff volunteer to be a part of that testing. And so they're really responsible in the mornings, that Monday morning, to do a lot of that. And we've been very appreciative that they've been willing to do that. I think it shows that it's important. When people are willing to step up and do that work, it shows that it's important. Now, we haven't had a ton of interest yet. We had 15 or 16 on our first time and five today, outside of those that are there as well. But we're going to continue on and see, maybe it's the date. You might look at, instead of Mondays, maybe a different day. Maybe it's timing, and just see where people are at. We want to continue to provide it. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention to know that we're still doing it, that we're, it'll continue to evolve. But I listed the staff that are here, Cody Mickelson, Emma Mickelson, Tony McIntyre, Meredith Meidinger, Leanna Brown, and of course, Amy Newstall. They're all participating in that process as well. Very appreciative for the state of North Dakota for their help, National Guard as well. That was nice to have that support. That certainly would have looked different on our first testing without the National Guard there to help us out and make sure that we're aware. COVID bank update. So one of the things I'm going to do, probably on a quarterly basis, is just provide, just like we do on a weekly basis with our COVID impact tables, we'll send out a quarterly report to our staff through the listserv and just say, "This is what we started with, this is where we're at in terms of total days." Of course, we won't drill down to individuals and say, "This person took 11 days," and we're not going to do that. But we will talk total numbers. And so as of the 28th, that was 27.22 days from the bank. And actually, that's closer to 30 now, or, I'm sorry, to 40 now. I think it's a shade under 40 if you go through all of January. So certainly been used, and those have been used for anything, from positive tests to quarantines, to pending tests, to doctors' appointments related to testing. So certainly being used so far. I will quickly provide, or at least as quickly as I can, some updates legislatively. I'm tracking 134 bills, and I'm not going to go over all of those, but I'll highlight a few that I think you should be aware of. And some of these will be the same, and I'll just continue to update you. Some of them will change, a lot of things change in the course of this, you know, up to crossover bills get killed, or bills advance. And so some of this will change, some we'll just continue to monitor all of the time, and I'll give you updates, and some of this will shift. So if it's a highlighted area, I'm just showing you where, you know, what's been happening, if it's in a committee so far, if it's moved on over to the Senator of the House, if it's reached, if it's going to go once crossover comes. So if you're just wondering on where a bill is tracking, look to that highlight. House Bill 1027, in that bill, I think I've talked about this before, that that's if you are transporting a student out of your district, you aren't able to claim transportation funding, you know. So if a student, or if a bus comes into Jamestown from another school district, they get compensated for miles up to district lines. And the idea behind that is the state pays for transportation miles once, inside your district. If students are leaving outside the district, districts can still do that, but you don't get funding for them. So as an example, you know, we have a number of schools that come into Jamestown, bring buses into Jamestown. Again, they would not have access to transportation funding for those miles. The difference for that is CTE centers. So we have a consortium that we know that supports Montpelier, Medina, well, Montpelier, Gakel, other districts. If they're busing as a part of that CTE consortium, those miles are still compensated. So that would be the, if you're open and enrolled, their tuition agreement, that's not the case. House Bill 1083, we all know that last year was a different year for students. And 1083 essentially states that our scholarship requirements would change in the second semester of 2020, and you would be exempt from that see or hire requirement as it relates to the scholarship. So that was, if there was a negative impact due to the pandemic, that wouldn't impact a student's ability to access the North Dakota State Scholarship. You'll see a couple bills or groups of bills listed in here. Oftentimes, we have multiple bills that do the exact same thing or try to solve the same problem in multiple ways. 1111 and 2196 are both discussing competency-based learning initiatives, so I'll continue to see what flesh is out there, and I'll provide information for that. 1114 is an area that I feel particularly passionate about. It's the teacher mentoring program. So what it would do is expand that to a second year. In Jamestown, we ask all of our new teachers to participate in the teacher mentor program. It's a great value, not only to the mentors or the mentees, but to the mentors as well. And I would hope that we would continue to support that in year one. But if that can be expanded into year two, that's a great benefit to teachers, and I think that would be a wise, long-term investment for our state. House Bill 1143, and I just share this because it's an example of some of the type of bills that occur in terms of curriculum. And this is a requirement for an elementary school patriotism project. And so right now, that's passed the House Education Committee. It hasn't gone to a floor vote yet, at least not that I'm aware of. But that's another bill. 1167 is, I think is a kind of a fascinating concept. We certainly know that there is not taxpayer equity in the state of North Dakota. You have to look at the difference between, say, McKenzie County and Jamestown Public, and you would see a pretty vast difference in terms of taxpayer equity. And so 1143 would study taxpayer equity. And so 1143 would study taxpayer equity and consider the creation of a centralized taxing authority. So kind of an interesting, really big, big topic, but I'll, we'll see where that shakes out. 1188, it would make it, would provide a credential for what's called a special education technician. We know that in special education, very difficult to find staff, and this technician would have, conduct some of the responsibilities and duties that are, that instead of the classroom teacher, instead of that credential teacher, so that might allow that teacher to spend a little bit more time on other responsibilities, say, as working with the student as opposed to some of the other requirements that they have. 1202, another, what I find an interesting bill that I'm pretty connected with, at least in terms of other work that I do, and that's, so 1202 would move the Common Schools Trust Fund from the Department of Trust Lands to the State Investment Board. So if you're not aware of one of the roles, or probably the biggest role the Common Schools Trust Fund has, it's a constitutional fund, and it provides a pretty significant portion of the per pupil payment. So when we say the per pupil payment is $10,036 per pupil, around 1,500 of that actually is, comes from the Common Schools Trust Fund. So the value of that fund, and there's a, it's not as simple as just saying earnings, it's, it's part of, it's a percentage of of the total value of the fund. So, but that fund, it has a pretty significant driver of our per pupil payment as well as potential savings to the state. And so that's a pretty big, we don't talk about this fund a lot because it's always just been around as part of the Constitution, part of the Enabling Act, that it, or it's a constitutional fund, it's part of the the Enabling Act, so it's, it's awfully important to us, and we don't talk about it near enough. But if you look at, if that was transitioned to the State Investment Board, asset allocation similar to what the legacy fund has, the difference in that almost $5 billion fund is $500 million in the last five years. So in my mind, any, any way you can grow that fund is a, is a pretty good deal. Now, where that goes, who knows? This is the second time that this bill has come up. It was, it was introduced last session as well, and it failed in the House. But we don't know where it'll go, but it's something that I think is important that we continue to track. Like I said, we don't talk about the Common Schools Trust Fund enough, but it certainly has huge, huge impacts for schools. So something that monitors watching. 1210 is another study bill. It's already passed the House and will go over to the Senate, but this studies what is the out-of-pocket, pocket expenses for teachers on school-related items. And so that's something that has gone through discussions the last couple of sessions as well. 1281 provides public dollars to provide a tax credit for private or homeschool students. It was originally $2,000 in that bill, and it's been amended down to 500. It did get a due pass recommendation, but a similar bill got a due pass recommendation last year as well. Once that goes through appropriations, things often change in approach. 1342, 2042, and 2046 are another example of multiple bills trying to solve the same problem. The PERS Fund, which is Public Employees Retirement System, so that PERS pension fund needs a boost, not unlike what happened to Teachers Fund for Retirement a number of years ago, which is in pretty good shape and continues to go up to 100%. PERS is struggling, and this bill was proposed last session and somehow did not pass, and so something does certainly need to happen here, but there's a cost for the district. Anytime that we see an increase to part of the retirement programs, there's going to be an impact. I've kind of sketched you out some costs depending on on what bill. Some obviously more substantial than others when you're talking 1% versus 5%. 1388 is the one bill that will certainly be on here all the time, that is our per pupil increase bill. That's at 1%, 1%. I strongly believe that that will finish that 1%, 1%. Been wrong before, I don't think it's going to go up. It certainly could go down depending on how projections, budget projections are, but I feel relatively confident that we'll be in that range. And if we do get to 1%, 1%, those are the amounts there, 10135 and 10237 and a per pupil. Senate Bill 2215 is the bill that addresses impasse, and it essentially sets a deadline date, and it's, it has a new start date in February and then a deadline date. And essentially, if you, unless both sides agree to continue, once you reach June 1st, you are at impasse. It isn't a declaration of impasse, you are just there. And then you go through the same fact-finding process. The difference, of course, being, as I said earlier, if both sides say, you know what, we're close, or both sides, we are close, but we want to continue working and we don't want to go to impasse, you can still do that. And so you could continue to negotiate through, but this would state essentially, like I said, if you aren't and one side doesn't, or both sides don't agree, you would instantly be in impasse. The idea behind it would be, of course, you could issue contracts before the school year started. People would know if they had a position, families would know where their, who their student, who their child's teacher was or teachers were. So I'm going to pause. I kind of ran you through a couple of different pieces of legislation there. If there's questions, I'd be happy to answer on any of those.
Any questions on the bills? Early in the game yet too, so.
Well, with that, I would stand for questions overall, or just a reminder that the recommendations that were, we continue in Instructional Plan One, and that we'll continue to meet Gail every other week.
Have we had any updates on when our teachers might be able to get vaccinations? I've had a few questions that people are hearing that Minnesota teachers in many places are getting vaccinated. They have friends in other states, teachers have, some states have really ramped up their teachers, especially in fear of those variants taking hold, remembering back to where we were in November with how stretched our staff was, if some of those fears of those variants bear true. Have you heard any talk of them prioritizing teachers so that we could prioritize keeping instruction in person?
So what I do know is it, it sounds like there are additional or higher volumes of tests coming, which is great for everybody in Suttsman County, but it will expedite our ability to have our teachers and our staff vaccinated. I don't have any additional updates in terms of a date. I just know that Central Valley is continuing to monitor, and they're as anxious to get vaccines to everybody, including teachers and support staff as possible, but I wish I could say, boy, we're going to have it done by this date. I don't think anybody knows until they see how many, until the vaccine doses continue to come in at higher volumes than they are so far.
Yep, Gail?
I was just wondering, because I know that some states, DPI and the Department of Health had prioritized and kind of really upped that group, which is something I'd really like to see, given especially some of those variants, how they're impacting younger children, I would like to see. I mean, I didn't want to see us back where we were at that point, so. Just my little lobby there.
No, I certainly agree, and I don't think a lot of people would disagree with you either. It's just, it's just, I'm sure when Central Valley has the doses, they will get them to us as soon as possible as when it's our turn.
Any other questions, Rob? None? Jason?
Excuse me. So Instructional Plan One.
Oh, yeah, I didn't address that. I'm.
Oh. Well, I was going to say, that does not include the regular seven-period days at the high school, correct? We're still, okay.
No, they're, they're still, you know, again, eventually, that's the plan, to move back into there, and they will get there when it's, you know, when the schedule dictates that they can. I thought you were going to reference that I incorrectly stated on here, then Instructional Plan One, elementary five days, we're going all days for high school and middle school. I just didn't change that in my report, so I apologize. That's the question I thought you were asking.
Heidi? Heidi?
When, how often are you meeting and when do you meet again?
So we're meeting the week of February 8 through the 12th. We will meet virtually when we can, if we feel like we need to meet. When our numbers have been consistent, we've been able to meet via email, and it has been, you know, fairly brief because we're continuing on the same. But we'll either meet virtually, face-to-face, or just share data and everybody can, but but that's the week of February 8 through the 12th.
Any other questions? None? Okay. Moving on, we've already had the board education with Officer Jeffrey, any old business? Hearing none, moving into new business, we have nothing under activities. Under number two, building and grounds, we have the facilities proposal overview. Rob? Or who's?
Adam? That is, Mr. Gaylor and I, if it's all right, will kind of tag team on this one, and I'm going to start, and Mr. Gaylor, feel free to to add in points as well. As I talked about in my report, where the recommendations we'll make are different than, to be honest, they're different than what I anticipated in August. And the reason that it's different is because we took a greater look, and I think that when you look at adding a turf space, the first place you go to is, well, that space needs to have a place to change, and that locker room facility is in a little bit of storage, and, you know, that's the common sense place where your head first goes. But as we explored the, this even in greater detail, as we looked at what available spaces and what we call the domino effect of if this happens, then this, if this happens, then this, the solution became different. And I'll talk about that, but I want to talk a little bit, and Mr. Gaylor and I will talk a little bit about the process as well. And it was a shared process really between the work that we did internally, and then we could only go so far, and then we needed additional help, and JLG Architects were, who managed the project for you, Jay, they were kind enough to provide their expertise to us and make additional suggestions, try to make those ideas into, into more concrete concepts. And then we also leveraged our partnership with Consolidated Construction to get some cost estimates for similar projects. And, you know, we all knew going into this that we had a list, a wish list of things that would be great to solve, but we knew the wish list was going to be more than $500,000. We knew that, we knew that part going in, that the, how significant that difference was, you know, was a little bit more than maybe anticipated, but still, it's the idea that you have to go in thinking about all your needs so you can scale down to what is the biggest priority. So I did put a timeline here, the the board voted to approve to move forward with shared facility agreement in July of 2020. I should be sharing this, I apologize. On the 6th, you refinanced debt and approved the sale of state aid refunding certificates of indebtedness about a shade under $4 million, with 2 million of that committed to our, as a financial commitment to the shared facility itself, and you also earmarked $500,000 for additional facilities at the high school. Again, the thought process was that was a locker room, you know, that was where our heads were at at that time. So once, you know those two things as a board. So throughout the fall semester, Mr. Gaylor, Mr. Roltz, and myself, Mr. Nelson, a lot of, I guess, a lot of hands in that pot, began having conversations prioritizing and investigating facility needs related to how this would impact, how the turf practice field would impact facilities. And then December 18th is that time period that I referenced that said, well, we did about as much as we can do. We need a little more help taking that concept and making it into a proposal. And so we also have been meeting since December 18th with JLG, and we're continuing to meet with them. We have another meeting scheduled for this week, actually. And we started that process of looking at that space and then thinking about what would locker room space look like. So I just want to briefly walk through what some of those initial investigations were. So these are all the things that we did as a district. If you look at the design questions, these, this is what we were trying to solve, you know, this is kind of the framework of what we were trying to do internally. So what problems are we trying to solve? What enhancements do, should we be considering? How do we best service our students and staff and community with the limited resources that we have? We know that $500,000 isn't going to do everything, so what can it do and how can, how can that be used best? So along those same lines, how can we think about multi-use space? And how can we think about phasing and the flexibility of all of our needs to make sure that we can address issues now, but that we're positioned to do that in the long term as well? So how do we create that plan that can be phased to? Adam, you want to talk about discussions around pre-engineered, conventional, and metal pre-engineering, just to give us a brief overview?
Sure, yeah. So some of the concepts that we were talking about started to, that were needs or enhancements that come along with this project were things that were obviously outside the means of the resources that were allocated for it. And so we started to have conversations about what do these facilities look like across the state and nation when we're adding facilities on that have to do with some of the same types of activities we're looking at. And so we had a conversation with people about the different cost structures around conventional construction versus pre-engineered. And with pre-engineered, obviously, you know, there's cost savings with that compared to conventional construction, and a lot of that has to do, or a lot of that also needed to be verified within the city around what are the existing codes within the high school, and then where are structures, sewer, water, existing structures such as existing walls already in place, so that maybe we can get a few more things on the list of things that the scope of the project was looking at. And it's a conversation, obviously, there's aesthetics to consider, and there's functionality to consider, but it was certainly something that we are strongly considering as a good solution and wanted to bring that information here as well. So when we looked at pre-engineered, lower-cost per square foot, some lower maintenance types of costs, you, most of you have seen those capital improvement projects, and some of those have been projects to the high school, which, you know, a lot of times I'll hear from people in the community that, isn't that the newest building in the district? And yes, sections of the roof need to be replaced. And yes, we had a large caulking project that basically filled in large gaps in the precast concrete that over time, just, things just shift. And yes, we've had a number of projects, you know, updates in the parking lot. It seems like those things should last longer, but everything has a usable life, so we're looking at what's a, what's a material and a building type that would give us a good length of life out of that as well. Some of the other costs that we had considered in that were, what are the finishes? And so what, what type of structure, what types of finishes are we used to, and what types of finishes might be acceptable for the type of use that we're looking at? So when we started to think about that concept, it allowed us to maybe expand a little bit beyond what the initial scope was, which was, our thoughts were just locker room facilities. And instead, we started to have a conversation about if we could enhance or add on to the building and then repurpose existing spaces, that may be more efficient and more proximal to serving the same need, but with, again, a better use of resources. If we look at a, from a bang-for-your-buck standpoint, adding a locker room out in the middle of a space that might get used for seasons when the turf field is getting used has a different feel for impact for all kids than adding on to a building where you could have a space that might be used or will be used 12 months of the year, certainly.
So these are just some, these pictures are just some examples of what that metal structure may look like, just some different examples that were found across. may look like, just some different examples that were found across. And then just think about these as we continue our discussion because they'll be pertinent. But this is an example of what that space, that type of space may look like. So when we initially had the, if you had a question, go ahead.
And maybe you'll get to it, but this design or this concept, are there any downsides to it? I mean, long-term maintenance, heating? Just, just a general question.
In terms of pre-engineered versus conventional? So when the high school was built, I believe in 2004, and at a pretty economical rate per square foot. And when you look at current construction costs, that precast or brick is exponentially higher than, you know, pre-engineered and metal building. I don't know about the lifespan of the building, but it's something I can look into. And I also don't know about the heating cost of a space like that. I know that there could be some savings if you're talking floor heat or you're talking HVAC. But in schools, typically, the code requires HVAC systems, which you guys are all familiar with.
So our initial conversations, when we, again, thinking back to August, we had that, well, if we could solve every problem, what would those problems be? And these are a list of those considerations, everything from locker rooms to officials' offices, to cardio rooms, to dance studio needs, those types of things. Those are all in that item for consideration, again, so it'll come in important later. So our original priority list, so when we first started talking in August, came down to these priorities. You know, of course, locker room facilities, storage, athletic development, concessions and restroom swimming, or concessions and restrooms in the swimming area. If you are, if you've ever been to a swim meet, if you are a fan watching a swim meet and you want to use the restroom facilities, you go downstairs to the same restrooms that you would use if you were right next door in, watching a basketball game. So a pretty lengthy jaunt. Same for concessions, you know, outside of, if you are going to, if we do have a larger meet, then the wrestling room gets dissembled and you can do it in there, but pretty inconvenient for those folks. Athletic training, officials' room, wrestling, you know, is there a better space for wrestling? And then just as a general rule, repurposing existing space. We don't have a cardio space right now, at least a designated space, or a dance studio as well, although we have a large number of students in those activities, we don't have a designated space for them. And Adam deserves an awful lot of credit for this, really digging deep into the blueprints and looking at, as he talked about before, what is our code going to be? I know a lot of phone calls into the city to ask questions about code and trying to get a little bit ahead of some of these conversations with our architects and trying to provide some options to them. So we are a little bit further in the game before we have to make some decisions. But we looked at options, which I'll walk through a little bit, costs, pros and cons. And then how are we going to ask our stakeholders for feedback on what works best for them as well? So if you look at, there's going to be three options that I'll talk about. Option three, so if you think of this, this is our gym here, swimming area, this is the hallway in between those two spaces. So if you think about that, this is north, this picture is north facing. So gym, pool, hallway. So option three is straight north of the hallway. Option two is east, well, a little bit south and southeast of that hallway, south of the pool. This is the pool area. Option one was in this parking lot area here. So those are the three spaces that we initially looked at that might make sense. Of course, this makes sense from a proximity standpoint to the field. So, and this is what I was talking about with Mr. Gaylor, really digging in and finding out what infrastructure existed there and if there were savings to be had, where might be the most advantageous location from that standpoint? And we did look at a lot of the pros and cons. I don't think it's too hard to understand why this is a great option from a proximity standpoint, but really not that feasible. And you're probably losing more than you're gaining in terms of the parking lot and the location's great, but just not real feasible. Came down to option two and three were the most feasible locations for us to look at any additional space. We were concerned, of course, about this space. And if you know our pool area, this is a beautiful window that brings in a lot of light. And so anything that would take away from that would be, could potentially be problematic. But from a location standpoint, they worked it really well. Diane, you have a question?
Yes, I was looking at option one and, you know, I've always thought that that was an odd arrangement, that circular drive where you, and you can't get in that door, you can only pick up there, you can't drop off. It's a very tiny parking lot. What was precluding you not using that option? Because it would, it would kill two birds because that's, that's an area that's never been functional in my mind, but maybe I'm wrong.
It would be cost prohibitive to, for the site work in particular, you're digging up a parking lot. It would limit some access from, you know, into this area, although option two does that as well, which, you know, we do have delivery that happens here too, food service delivery. And that would, that would make that potentially problematic. Like I said, really the benefit to option one was really proximity because the field will be here, you know, just straight south of that area. So the proximity would be nice, but it just didn't have enough draw to it as a space. So once we got to the point where that's really what we could do. And so we needed to bring JLG and they've really been great. They've really provided a lot of support and guidance for us. And really, the first thing that happened is we sat down and they asked us about our priorities. We did a facility walkthrough with two different architects there and got a lot of ideas, had a chance to talk through a lot of things from a lot of different perspectives, from the coach perspective to the athletic administrator perspective, or activities administrator perspective, from the a greater management perspective from Mr. Gaylor and just looking at all of the needs across the facility and then myself as well. I thought it was a great opportunity for us to really start to hone in on what we needed in that space. And like I said before, that domino effect, which I'll talk about in just a bit. So Adam, unless you want to add anything to these, I'm just going to kind of roll through. You can just see an example of some of the evolution of those discussions. We looked at boxes before, you know, just, you know, square footage boxes. And now we're starting to say, okay, so if this had these priorities, you know, how would that work? And this is option, our original option three, so this is north of, you can see that this is the northernmost court in our gym. So this is the pool in this corner here. And so the north part of this hallway would continue these access out. Then there would be athletic training, a space for a trainer, locker rooms, two locker rooms and a football locker room along with a coach's office. So that is, again, those priorities that we talked about. But this would be the north part of the building and that's one of the options, a pretty big square footage.
I just have a question before you get too far into this other, could you back up one slide? That, the one Diane was talking about. That, so do we feel like there's enough, so on that, obviously, the shipping area would be affected. But like, that's the band and choir area there. Do we feel like they have enough space? I mean, as long as we're looking at spaces, you know, along that longer wall there?
So are you asking about space during COVID or during? Because they've been, they've been operating out of the theater and the gymnasium and the commons because we've got great enrollment in all of those programs. From a scheduling standpoint, they are not scheduled out through every class period of the day in every room. So we do have room for growth in that. And then we also have the theater, I mean, that's a great resource for them right there. Lighting is something that, you know, we need to continue to work on and keep up with in the theater. But otherwise, that's a pretty great space for them and we've been able to accommodate even during COVID and regularly as well.
Thank you, yeah. I know, I'm being optimistic, I'm thinking non-COVID.
Sure, yeah.
As it can operate in the fall. But I just, when I saw that picture and I do agree with Diane, it always to me seemed like the parking lot should have been shifted that, the whole parking lot should have been shifted that way a little bit more or something. But I mean, there's the grass space, which is just kind of not used, I don't think. And so I just, and it made me think about the music hall, so thank you.
So that was option one. Like I said, a pretty big footprint in that space. And again, we aren't at this point trying to determine what fits in a $500,000 budget. We know this doesn't. It's about trying to see, what is that, what could that space look like long-term? You know, just trying to think, not just right now, but moving forward. Looking at option two, that shrinks that square foot just a little bit. You can still see we are in the same location, but shifts a little bit. We lose some locker room space with this. Again, if you're trying to fit a certain price point, you know, you need to start seeing where could you trim in terms of square footage? If you look down in the south, this is what was option two. You can notice that this is the pool area window. And so if we went down into the south option, this space would accommodate that, so we're not taking away from that natural sunlight and the aesthetics of that space. But you would still utilize, they're the same pieces here. It's kind of the same model as option two, just shifted down. So you're looking at football lockers, athletic trainer, coach's office, athletic training. The same idea. Parking lot, this is the roundabout right here. Yep, so it's right up, butts right up to that, to the pathway there. So again, just looking at options for square footage. If you look at this area, one of the things that we talked about too, and again, thinking not just right now, but in the long term, that we would want whatever space we start with to have the capacity to build up instead of just building out. And so we would want to, whatever space we do here, have it possible for this to be a mezzanine level facility. We know it's going to be cheaper for us to build up than it is to build out. So we think that there's potential options there. And one of the recommendations we'll make in whatever space we do is that we can build up.
Maybe, maybe just on that one. One of the needs that we've identified, and you've probably seen it on the capital improvements projects since I've been here, is athletic storage. And while storage for anybody, but in particular, that one's been on capital improvements. That slide highlights that yellow area, which the architects came up with a creative solution to the dangerous, I guess, practices that we have now of how we're storing on shelves that go to the ceiling and then climbing down ladders with totes. And it was a simple, you know, having a catwalk in there where you could have a staircase that would go up to a second level. And so again, if managing that same space, but more efficiently by building up. No cost estimates on that yet, but that could be a potential long-term solution for that.
Well, in that, in that space, not only, as Adam talked about, just the practices are more like a warehouse and kind of dangerous if you think about utilizing the space that way. But it's super inefficient. What we, how much available space we have in that, in that hallway area and how much we're actually using. We have a huge storage issue, but we're not effectively using this space at all. And I think that was, you know, a really interesting solution that they had and one that I, that I think we need to continue to think about. So again, just looking at the same type of options in terms of a square footage. Anything to highlight here, Adam, that you think is pertinent, anything else?
No, you can see the architect's drawings on these screenshots. And so you can see where they're saying things like, well, that's going to block all your natural light, could cause snow issues. And so they put a lot of thought into these designs, even though they're just boxes. They were trying to make that fit or really give us some scope of an idea. I know, you know, that circular parking area is also something that's a concern. One of the things that we ran into is our geothermal goes underground there as well. And so if we're talking about putting pilings down or, you know, getting too deep there, we could run into that as an issue as well. It actually, there's some type of access for that in the middle of that green roundabout area. So I don't know if that's a problem that would have to be solved if that was ever to be redesigned. It's functional for what it's intended for now. If we, if people were going to be accessing the building more through their activities, we're going to be coming through that back area. It's not functional for that as much, but.
Heidi, do you have a question?
Just that other, the north side one. As far as like, would that house like the concessions and like public restrooms? And is that too far from the field?
So yeah, we'll talk about, just ask you to kind of bookmark that question for a little bit and then you'll see how all of this, all the dominoes start to fall. And it was really a fascinating project, you know, to have conversations about. Because you see the if this, then that, if this, then that, and how those things shift over months and months of talking about these different things. And then one falls and then everything else kind of follows through as well. This is where our relationship with Consolidated Construction was awfully helpful. They aren't perfect comparisons, but they were similar size or type of construction structures that we could utilize. If you look at some of the square footages that we were talking about earlier in the presentation, you're closer to $75 a square foot and we know that that's not realistic. What we know is realistic is probably closer to those 220, anywhere from 220 all the way to 313 per square foot. One of the things we know about locker rooms too, when you're talking locker rooms, the finishes in a locker room is far more expensive than the finishes are going to be in a classroom or some of these other spaces. So I do think it's important to think about that as well in terms of the finish costs. So this document really brought it home to us. Again, we always knew that this wasn't going to be, we couldn't fund all of those things. But it really did help us bring into how far away we really were and the need to reprioritize and repurpose. So if you've never, I know I talk about these all the time, but those that don't know, I do forced choice exercises. I think they're great activities. If you've never done one with me, essentially what it is, is it's a comparison of variables. You take all of the variables that you have and it becomes a choice between one or the other. And we did that with different stakeholders. So we had three coaches and three administrators. And we put all of these components in a forced choice. In a forced choice, you have to say, if I can only have one, do I want A or B? And then you do the same thing for A or C, A or D, A or E. And you go through all of those and essentially you're comparing every variable against itself and you come out at the end with a ranking. And so when we did this with six different people, these were the priorities, this was their rank, their average and the range that they showed up. If it was, for example, the enhanced fitness performance and wellness space, that was the number one priority based on all of these different folks. It averaged 1.8 if you took all of their ratings and ranked it. And the range was only one to three. So it's pretty clearly the highest priority from these different perspectives. And athletic laundry, as one might imagine, was the least prioritized space. It was, it ranked number 12. The average was 10 and a half and the range was from eight to 12. So you get a sense in those, in that forced choice exercise where people were. And after this, after all the discussions and then this reprioritization, we knew pretty clearly that these were what our priorities should be. So now we need to look to reinvestigate all of the spaces that we've been looking at, knowing what our priorities are. And actually, Adam, I'm going to turn this back over to you to have a conversation about how those dominos are starting to fall.
Sure. And so one of the main needs that we had, that we had identified was locker room access that was close to that athletic field that will be out there. It's right out the door for music, for marching band, it's right out the door for our PE. And that kind of led to a And that kind of led to a conversation about, well, it's also, if it's right out the door for PE, don't our existing structures on that side of the building maybe meet that need? We anticipate softball, the field will be striped for that. It's a large enough space for soccer. It's obviously going to be a football field as well. And we know that we've got those varsity locker rooms. And the reason that this slide is in there is the discovery came from the architect's drawing of what a large locker room space would be like that was close to that field. And then if you look up at the varsity locker room, which is just in the existing white structure right there, that space is roughly equivalent to what they were proposing would be required for 100 lockers for, say, a football program with their higher equipment and space needs. 100 tends to be about the number that they've had and about the size that they've had access to on the Washington campus at Ernie Gates. And so that's made a lot of sense with exchanging some of the small lockers in that space for larger lockers, that that could be an opportunity to just utilize that space. Essentially, it's a, for football, it's a practice locker room, but they use that space a lot because their games, under the facilities agreement that you've seen with UJ, the games would be played at, at UJ. So it's a nice sized space that could be repurposed. Along with that, when you look at the second floor, this is a look at the second floor in that PE area. And you can see the wrestling room. They've got wrestling mats. The architects basically took wrestling mats and put them down and said, well, if we could move wrestling, these are the pros and cons of it. Wrestling is a program that right now, successful, it's grown quite a bit. I don't know that their space has ever been everything that they would want, but certainly getting by with that. But they could get some mats. They would just get thrown out of the ring and into the wall in that space if they were practicing in there. But it could be a multi-use space for dance, cardio, that sort of thing. And we also recognize the, the impact of that space being right next to the swimming area and plumbing access right below for potential concession periodic use or for sure, a restroom that would be accessible. Again, as Dr. Lex said, that's a long john, particularly if grandma and grandpa are coming to visit and watch a swim meet and then have to go way back around quite a distance.
And upstairs.
To access those.
Up and downstairs.
Yep.
So just, just to make sure everybody's thinking of the same place, this is the mezzanine around the gymnasium. So our basketball courts would be the first floor of this, the mezzanine. These are all second floor. Here's the first floor of the pool, the second floor, the bleachers for swimming. So right now, this is athletic development. This is where Mr. Nelson's athletic development is. So it used to be a cardio, it used to be weight room, or it is a weight room. This is the wrestling room here. So straight up these stairs around the corner, you get to the weight room.
So as we looked at those spaces, creating, creating space by adding an additional fitness area would then move that fitness and weights. And we've got several classes that are served throughout the day from 5:30 in the morning until 7:30, 8 o'clock at night. There are kids in that facility. Moving that out creates a domino effect of creating additional space for some of those other projects and repurposed, the repurpose of the existing varsity locker room. We felt like that was an efficient use of that space. Throughout the day, I just pulled some stats on this. We have about 275 to 285. So, you know, quite a few of our students, over a third of our students involved in a class in that one particular room. So this doesn't include all our other PE opportunities. But throughout the day and in this year, we've had three sections of female strength and development, which has become increasingly popular, that it's an all-female class. Mrs. Sunderland has a couple of those classes. Mr. Nelson had one previously this year. Nutrition and fitness, which is a combination of a fax class and a fitness class. Three sections of advanced strength and development. Two sections of beginning hour, or beginning strength, which is a precursor to advanced strength. And then two sections of zero hour, which are those classes that start early in the morning for strength and conditioning. And then an additional average of a couple hundred students that are participating in summer programs. So 12 months of the year, that area of the school is used a good chunk of the day, 12 hours of the day. Additionally, we wanted to look at what's that impact of that PE facility across the community? And as you know, facilities have an impact for our businesses with people visiting. They have an impact for our students when they visit other towns. And we wanted to be sure that we were attractive to those types of activities. And so we have some non-scheduled or non-JPS events that use those facilities as well. And I wanted to give you a little scope of what that looked like. But several thousand students coming through those facilities in the year.
So now we've kind of laid a foundation. So here's, here's the recommendations that we're making. If you look at a phased project, this is on the north end. So knowing that, if you can look at this text box down here, we would use, as Mr. Gaylor talked about, our existing locker room space for football. That addresses that particular issue. But we would like then for phase one to be dedicated to a fitness, performance and wellness space. We talked earlier how that was right here in this space on the second level between the pool and the gym. To move that space here, this would be an additional space, about 5,000 square feet. That would be phase one. It would be built to accommodate growth up, so another mezzanine level. The, the additional phases after that, phase two, three and four, would be this blue area. And those are locker rooms, other locker rooms that would be utilized also for, well, PE, but, but in the swimming area as well. That would include, of course, plumbing and toilets, showers, as well as coaches' offices. And that would work into this, these additional phases. And again, using the, our existing locker rooms, you know, we're really concerned about the amount of capital we're talking about being devoted to one activity in one season. And we really feel like this could be a better use in the long-term for many more students in the short-term, but also in the long-term and still solve our initial problem, which was, what are we going to do with football coming? So that domino effect is, as you can see, we're increasing our classroom capacity. We would have two classes able to be scheduled for our fitness at the same time. It would provide temporary space for athletic training, which was another one of our priority areas. Now we have an opportunity to consider space for all of those areas that we talked about as well that didn't have the same level of dedicated space. That's cardio, dance, swim concessions. It could solve our problem thereof when we're asking people to walk from the swimming bleacher rooms down the stairs, or from the bleachers down the stairs, through the hallway into the commons to use the bathroom or to go through concessions and storage, as well as potentially wrestling as well. And it creates all of those opportunities. One of the things that has been limiting for us in this area has been access from middle, middle school students. We'd have a greater capacity to have middle school students as well, which supports all of the development for our students. The potential for weightlifting is an extracurricular, not something I had considered before, but something that I think our staff is pretty passionate about. Potential for adult or staff classes and access to those spaces as well. Enhanced ability to host team camps in the summer, which as Mr. Gaylor talked about before, every additional program we bring in is, is development for our community. And then expanded capacity for our summer strength and conditioning courses, which it seems like we always have more students than we can support or more students interested than we have capacity for. And so that would open up another opportunity for students as well. So here's just a more in-depth look at those phases. Again, phase one being that, that area for wellness.
One thing maybe that I could add on that slide is you can see the.
This one or this?
Yeah, that one's good. That they've used the existing walls, right? To maximize the efficiency, maximize the square footage that we can have access to in planning for that. They've worked with a pre-engineered building manufacturer and talked about matching the aesthetics. They talked about the roof lines and snow loads and possibility of mezzanine construction and height for, for mezzanine or second floor access in the future. And then they also looked at, well, what's the most efficient span there? That's about 50 feet wide. And then, of course, you can see the increments in the length. So they've done a lot of the, of the, taken a lot of the guesswork out of that. So from those original options that we had kind of penciled out square footage-wise, they were able to narrow that down based on the available funds and the opportunity to maximize the existing structure. So we're not talking about building another wall there. We're using the outside wall as the, as the one wall of that, two walls of that, actually. You lose some efficiency with the egress requirements because of the, you know, you have to continue that five-door pathway on the one end. But overall, they found that to be the most efficient use of that, of those resources to get a large enough space.
So here's a slide early of our guiding principles as we look through. And so you can kind of see how those values guided this, these recommendations. We wanted multipurpose use of space. We want to be as efficient as we can, impact the greatest number of people. Multi-season use of resources, so not dedicating all of those funds to minimal projects or projects that only impact a season or a group of students. You want it to be more than that. We wanted a plan that could address short-term needs, but also can be phased out for the future. We want to ensure that there's adequate access across all groups to fitness and wellness, that there's equity. As, as a board, we talk pretty consistently about making sure that we are stewards of community resources. And we believe the recommendation does that. Educational athletics contribute to a variety of students. We want to make sure that we have the best opportunities for all of those students as well. And there's, there's a real multiplier effect from fitness and performance development that we want to continue to support as well. So the next steps, really why, why we're here is because that's a shift from what we initially talked about, what we just heard. We laid a foundation for where we thought we were, or where we started and where we thought we were going to get to, to where we actually came. We need to, we need to know if we should continue or if we need to go back to the drawing board. And so we want just a little bit of guidance from the board in terms of if this is where we want to go. If it is not, we will go back to the drawing board. If it is, we'll want to work into an agreement with JLG to continue their work. There's, obviously we need an architect to go any further than where we have. And beyond that, I talked a little bit about the capital projects plan and how I think moving forward, we'd like to reengage with Consolidated Construction to revise our capital projects plan, that capital projects plan 2.0. If we did that, this would need to be, this could be a part of that, of that planning as well as all the other projects that come out of that capital projects plan. And, and having somebody, having a CMAR, for example, that could come and manage that, that project or all of those different projects would be wise. And so those are kind of where I see the next steps coming. So what are your thoughts? Are we on the right page or do we need to go back to the drawing board? Bob?
Has JLG said anything about a timeline for construction? We always have a short summer if we're going to do something within the high school setting to make sure it's ready for fall. And I'm not so concerned about the locker room. All that is a concern, but just don't like to have a lot of construction going on when we're back in session.
Sure. So it depends on the scope of, of the project. And that's a political answer. They also said that the surveying and the boring were the most important things to get done early enough so that the engineers could look at the structure and how that needs to be laid out, you know, both the mechanical side and the, and the structure itself. And so those were two things that they were eager to get done upon some sort of more final decision and timeline. And I think they had said that they, you know, would look to do those in March, April timeframe if we were looking for the start of a school year. In talking with Bill Nelson, who's the head football coach, they are certainly fine with starting the year down at Ernie Gates. They like, you know, that they've got those options for the year. But of course, you know, everybody would love to, you know, be at the new facility all the time. So.
Heidi?
I just want to applaud you for looking at the needs of all of our students rather than just solely narrowly at one program. I think that the stakeholders you included and including all the student groups. And clearly, this is going to impact the greatest, positively impact the greatest number of students. So I think, you know, the work you've done is, is a good, good start with this. My comments and thoughts, you mentioned boring and my limited construction knowledge, which is very minimal, but I'm in engineering. I even would like to see, working with the architects to see, as long as you're having, doing the boring and having construction done, that even if we could do as big a footprint as we can, even if some of it has to be walled off in cold storage for, you know, a period of time until we can move on to the next phase of finishing, I, I'd like to see that also looked at. Just long-term, that might actually just save us more money than having people come back and re-engineer and redo things. And codes change and things change. So that would be my thoughts. Thank you.
We've had similar conversations and questions about if those plans exist and the plumbing's stubbed in. Do you get to stick by the code at the time that it was designed? Or long run, do you have to go back and, and change things if code changes? And I don't have an answer for that yet. We've got another meeting yet this week, but that's on our list for the week. Because, you know, if, if that space gets built out and stubbed in, as you said, even if it's cold in storage until those finishes could be a later phase, it's obviously more likely to happen in the way that you originally envisioned it, which was kind of holistic, I hope. In that approach, we've tried to take a pretty most benefit stance, I guess, when we've looked at all those facilities and weigh everybody's needs in the long-term plan too.
Heidi?
Just want to add, I think, you know, being stewards of taxpayer dollars, if, if we have to spend a little bit more upfront to save a lot of money long-term, I think we also need to be considerate of that.
I think some of that comes with, you know, you know, some of what you're talking about, Heidi, you're absolutely right. We do have a finite budget that we have to work with. But I think part of, you know, revisiting the capital projects plan in the scope of this project as well as other projects could give us a greater sense of where those dollars might best be spent in the short-term and how they could impact the long-term. And, and like I said, with some Esser dollars, how much of that can be targeted for some of these, you know, things like HVAC that we might be able to shift some of those expenses there. And maybe you can move faster if the board wants to move faster with a certain piece of the project or wants to prioritize a wholly different project. But, but that's why I think that capital projects piece is so important to this whole discussion. And I think it needs to be tied into this whole discussion as has been recommended before. Melissa?
Melissa?
I heard you mention that Coach Nelson was consulted, obviously the football coach. Were other coaches that will be affected by this also? Were they consulted on that? And also, thank you for consulting the coach on that stuff, because I know sometimes plans are made without consulting the people who are actually going to be using the facility. So.
Yeah. So we had three fall coaches, soccer, swimming, football. Two of those individuals are also in, teach PE. So even if one's not in that particular building, but there's awareness to the needs for PE. So we were looking at it beyond just coaching, but also in the PE realm as well.
Jason?
Kind of a comment and a question perhaps, but I would like to just also reiterate to the public that this is addressing what was at one time a major hurdle for our district, for our asking for funding in a couple of referendums. So I think this is a huge step forward for our district and not only the athletic side of things, but also potentially down the road for other facilities, because it really is taking some of that choke collar off of us. And then, I don't know how to ask this question, but does this affect our relationship with Trac at all? I mean, I know we, doing shared facility things with them. Just wondering if this affects that at all.
I don't believe there'd be any change in the relationship with Trac. And I think the board is aware, you know, the relationship with Trac started with the gifting of land and the land swap. So I wouldn't envision anything changing with the relationship with Trac. That continues to be a really strong partnership. And, you know, at one point, I wanted to bring up that sort of related with the shared facilities. I was going to bring it up in my report, and I forgot. We're almost at the $11 million mark with total. That includes what the district has provided now. And so we know that's 11 and a half million is our target. So we're almost at 11. Again, just to reinforce how this has been represented in the community. The community is very supportive of this particular project. And I joked around a lot before about, you know, not the right project, not the right time. And as I've said before, it's been pretty clear from the community standpoint that this is the right project, and it's about time that we're looking together.
Aaron?
Yeah, I guess I, just like I say, I do understand and appreciate, you know, the process that you guys went through and how you came to your conclusions. And I think it is interesting. So I think it's something worthwhile to look at. And as you state here, it does really highlight the emphasis, I think, we need to put on that capital projects plan and look at our strategic and look at the, you know, the 100 other things that we want to do within the district as well and how this compares to that. So that, I'd like to, you know, understand how that's going to fit all together before we can make a final decision.
So you're looking for direction tonight to go through with an agreement to FJLC, to start the process, correct?
For concept, yes. Because, you know, we've gone about as far as we can go without all the additional work that needs to happen. You know, Mr. Gaylor talked about boring. I mean, we need plans and timelines, and we need to bid. And there's a lot of work that needs to be done between now and then. So that's something we would be looking for if we're on the right track. I mean, at some point, we need to start with this project in any case. But in terms of capital projects plan, I would want to, well, I have a meeting scheduled with Jim Paris from Consolidated Construction. And I was hoping to provide him, you know, some information about where the board is at in terms of, you know, updating the capital projects plan as well. And I do see all of this interconnected. Bob?
Do you need a motion on that or just consensus?
I think just direction. If we're on the right track, then we'll continue. And of course-
If we're on the right track, of course, we'll continue. Agreements would have to come back in terms of, you know, architects. And I mean, those are board-approved agreements and things like that. But I think we're at a stop point now. And so we need some direction.
I think from the comments made, and so I, my assumption would be that we're all in agreement that we should be moving forward. Is that- Aaron?
Just a further clarification on the timing. So if you, we get an input from this firm, is that, is there any time constraints as far as that, what they would recommend? And how would that fit in then with the timing of developing this updated strategic plan?
So I know that JLG has a relationship with the Consolidated Construction, like they do any other CMAR. So there's already relationships between those two entities. We have a relationship with Consolidated Construction. I would think we could get all of that happening concurrently. So there wouldn't be a conflict of time. I think we could start, if we wanted to move forward with revising that plan, I know that Consolidated Construction's already started to do some work, just based on my conversations. They wanted to be prepared in the event that we want to move forward. So I know that, I think we could get that to occur pretty quickly, to get those two projects in alignment. Does that answer your question?
Heidi?
I make a motion to move forward with the next steps, with the plans that were presented this evening, as well as concurrently moving forward with the capital projects plan.
Aaron, is there a second?
No, I just clicked you off. Go ahead, Aaron.
More of a parliamentary question here. Since it wasn't on the agenda for a motion, this is an informational session that we need to have.
Right. It was informational. I mean, and I don't know whether we need a motion to have you, as long as we have consensus, I mean, to go through. I think we all kind of nodded. Heidi?
I can withdraw my motion. I didn't see that it was listed as informational behind the agenda.
Yeah. And I think, Jason, you have a question?
Last question. This would not include any official bidding, correct? Okay, thanks.
That would come back. So, okay. Got your direction?
I do, thank you. And I know it was a long-winded presentation. I appreciate your patience as we walked through. But I do think it was important that you understand how we got there and, you know, how we got from what we anticipated to be one thing to connected with different outcomes. So I appreciate your ability to let us share a little bit.
Okay. Moving on to, oh, Bob, you have a question?
Just a comment that I think we need to express appreciation to administration for their, it's really hard to pivot when you're in the middle of a large project like this. And so, thanks. It shows some good forward-thinking, and I appreciate that. And I think the board would agree with that.
Absolutely. So, moving, yeah. Moving on to curriculum and assessment, we have nothing, nothing under finance tonight. Moving to personnel, is there a motion to approve the, accept the resignation of Paul Hanson, social studies teacher at the high school at the conclusion of the 2021 school year? Heidi?
I'd like to, a motion to approve and also to thank Mr. Hanson for all his years of service to our district.
Is there a second? Second by Gail. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moving to policy and procedures, there a motion to approve the second reading of the leave of absent policy, DDDB. Motion by Gail? Seconded by Heidi. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moving to tuition, letter A, is there a motion to approve the tuition agreement for 11th grade student to attend, Jamestown student to attend Medina Public School for the 2021 school year? Motion by Gail? Seconded by Jason. Any discussion? Hearing none. Assuming roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moving to letter B, is there a motion to approve the tuition agreement for a 9th grade Jamestown student to attend Pingree Buchanan Public School for the 2021 school year? Motion by Gail? Seconded by Aaron. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moving into other instructional plan review, is there a motion to approve the committee's recommendation with that plan? Motion by Gail, seconded by Bob. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Items for future agenda.
Just one thing. If you want to look back in your board education, we've done board education on what a construction manager provides. I would encourage you to look at that piece of board education again. I'm thinking I'm going to ask Jim Paris to come back again and provide board education on a CMAR and the benefits of a CMAR when you're looking at the scope of this project and potentially other large projects. So just as FYI.
If there is something up, that comes up, just let Rob or myself know. We'll try to get it on. Meetings to be scheduled, we have North Dakota School Board Association Virtual Negotiations Seminar on February 4th and 5th. We have the District Tech Committee Meeting Thursday, February 11th, 2021, 4 o'clock in the Technology Lab. Our next school board meeting is Monday, February 15th, 5:15 here in the Thompson Community Room. Have the Health Insurance Committee Thursday, February 18th, 3:45 here in the Thompson Community Room in the middle school. Roman numeral six, monthly superintendent evaluation to right-click on that and do that, one in sections one and five. Also to right-click on our adjournment to assess our meeting. No further business. Meetings adjourned.